Okay, we're gonna call our meeting to order. Let me welcome everyone tonight. It's Tuesday, June 13, 2023. I wanna call the board, a select board meeting to order. We have three scheduled matters this evening. They all pertain to license hearings for retail marijuana sales here in Tewksbury. Before we get into the heart of the meeting, I'd like to ask everyone in the room to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and the God of freedom and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I am going to start the first hearing. And before I do, I'll get to the hearing notice in a minute. But for the benefit of those present, and I probably will have to repeat this a couple of times this evening. But we're gonna ask for everyone's cooperation here. We have three hearings scheduled. We're gonna try to stay within a 60-minute timeframe. And we're gonna ultimately, in all likelihood, continue each of these hearings into our July meetings. We had three hearings last evening, and that is the approach that the board took. So our expectation is that we will continue that pattern over tonight. And again, next week, we have two other hearings on two other applications. So what I'd like to ask the applicants or proponents to do to help us with that is we all have had the benefit of the materials that you were kind enough to present to us. I know my colleagues and I have taken the time to review that material. In some cases, we've each individually done other research. So I think we're well-versed in what you've presented to us. What I'm hopeful you can do is give us maybe 15 minutes overview what you think we need to know, right? The key points, the salient points that will be helpful for this board. Then we're gonna ask, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions for you, and we'll work through that process for 15 or 20 minutes or so. And because it is a public hearing, we'll give any residents or abuddies who are in the room who might have some comments or concerns about the application or the location to give them an opportunity to offer their commentary. What I wanna stress is that we're not making decisions tonight. This is a fact gathering hearing. We're gonna take in as much information as we can. Last evening, we continued the three hearings to our July 18th board meeting. And that was done by design to allow for any further follow-up questions of you as an applicant. And if the residents of the town or the public wanna express any other concerns or raise any other questions, they'll have an opportunity to do that in written form between now and then. So we're trying to be very deliberate about it, but I want to just kind of manage expectations for everyone right at the outset. So hopefully, you can help us to stay on track, and I would appreciate that. We've done this now, last night we were here. We're gonna have a long evening this evening. So your effort to facilitate that discussion in the right manner would be greatly appreciated. And I'm gonna speak to the public when it becomes their time to speak to any concerns they have. So let me read the hearing notice for the first hearing that we're attending to. And then I'll ask those of you at the table here to introduce yourselves for the record. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Select Board Regulation Article 37, Marijuana Retail Sales License Policies and Regulations on June 13, 2023, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall 1009 Main Street, Tewksbury, Mass. 01876, on the application of the Stories Company LLC for a license to operate as an adult-use marijuana retailer on premises located at 2122 Main Street, Tewksbury, Massachusetts, consisting of an area of approximately 2,700 square-foot building. And our public notices always encourage input from the public, and we recommended that any written comments be submitted before Friday, June 9, 2023. I wanna note for the record that we have been provided in a butters list that's rather extensive, at least three pages long, as well as a copy of the legal notice that was posted by the town dated May 24, 2023. I also, for the record, want to acknowledge receipt of correspondence from Alan Bootyette, the owner and president of Bootyette's Autobody, located at 2,115 Main Street, dated June 5, 2023, expressing his opposition to this particular location. And I will also acknowledge correspondence dated June 12, 2023 from Carol Carey of 2,068 Main Street. And she wrote to the board expressing her support for this particular establishment to be located potentially at 2,122 Main Street. So just to make sure those two documents are in the record. I know in your materials, you submitted some other letters of support. And lastly, I'll acknowledge that the board has received May 17, 2023 correspondence, which was supplemental information that the applicant presented to the town and signed by Davis Patel. So hopefully, my colleagues have access to all of that information and certainly are aware of it. And with that, if I can, I believe it's counselor, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you don't mind, if you'd give us your name and your address, business affiliation, and each of the folks with you, that would be helpful for the record, okay?
Certainly. Thank you to the chair and members of the board. We're really pleased to be here. My name is Valerio Romano. I'm the attorney for the Stories Company LLC. 34 Elm Street in Cohasset is my office, and we're delighted to present to you. I can, I understand your concern with timing, and we'll run through our deck quickly and then do our best to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Must've been a fun ride getting here from Cohasset.
Yeah, it wasn't too bad, about an hour and 35 minutes.
Not too bad.
Yeah, it's been worse some nights.
There you go.
Yeah.
All right. So who's at the table with you?
Yeah, you guys just, so we have Ed Davis, our security contractor. We have Yash Patel, who's a consultant with our company, Davis Patel, and Tejal Patel, who's actually the managing member of Stories.
Okay, terrific. Welcome.
Yep.
Okay.
The bosses, basically.
There you go. All right. All right, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, and if you can, you know, you have a PowerPoint.
I do, yeah.
Behind us. Okay. Is it the same one that was in your presentation, or?
It's slightly different. You know, it's not fundamentally different, but there are some slight differences.
All right, so I don't mean to be rude, but I'm gonna turn it over this way.
No, I think that's a great idea.
I'll go back.
Yeah. So, you know, this first slide really just talks about most of the stuff that was really in the notice. The addition is that I just wanna make clear that we, this is a healthcare group. And so we have doctors, and Tejal has a master's in public health. And so we come at this, even though it's adult use, the Cannabis Control Commission has basically killed medical. So we came through this as adult use. But it does have a healthcare focus, and that's really the way they approach this. It's a really science-based approach. And it's also a family-owned business, 100% family-owned. So keep going. So Tejal, yep?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Tejal Patel. I'm the co-founder of Stories Company. A little bit about myself, I was born and raised in Maryland, got my undergraduate degree there, got my master's in public health in New York, worked for nonprofits for about five years. And then about four years ago, that's when I was, began my involvement in the cannabis industry. So I founded Uma Flowers, which is a wellness and health-focused cannabis retail company. With Uma Flowers, over the last four years, we have opened up an operational dispensary in Pepperell. We also are planning to open our second location in Lunenburg September of this year. And then we've also secured a host community agreement and a special permit with the city of Waltham. So we'll be planning to open our dispensary there as well. Outside of Massachusetts, Uma Flowers has also obtained state and local licensing approval for Topona Dispensary in Morristown, New Jersey. Currently, I manage the operations at the Uma Flowers Pepperell location. I'm there on a day-to-day basis. I'm involved with staffing, purchasing of products, marketing, all things related to operations. As exciting as it's been growing and developing Uma Flowers, I've made the decision to move on from Uma Flowers to operate the Stories Company dispensary. So my husband introduced me to the Stories Company in concept, Davis Patel. So I'll let him introduce himself and talk a little bit more about Stories.
All right. Yes, I'm Davis Patel. I'm Tejal's husband and the co-founder of the Stories Company. A little background myself, I'm a Waltham resident. I went to Northeastern University for my undergraduate studies. I went to the American University of Antigua for my medical schooling. And I did my internal medicine residency training in Lincoln Medical Center in the South Bronx of New York. Currently, I am a part-time physician at Rhode Island Hospital as an internist. And sort of my exposure and experience with cannabis began during my residency training. I was at the South Bronx in Lincoln Medical Center, very heavily impacted by the sort of substance abuse opioid epidemic. That's when sort of everything was an eye-opener for me. During my rotations in the ICU, I noticed out of our 40 beds that at any given time, about half of them were there due to complications or end effects of either opioids or alcohol. And I started realizing that if there was a cultural shift away from these to something where there's a risk reduction, such as cannabis, I think, I'm a big advocate that that cultural shift will lead to better health outcomes overall. Whatever everyone's take is on cannabis, I can confidently say that from a risk-reduction standpoint, they banned the wrong substance back in the 20s, back when they banned cannabis, you know what I mean, prohibition, alcohol. My involvement with the cannabis industry specifically started not too long after Tejal decided to launch Uma Flowers. Coming from a business, a family of small business operators, essentially convenience stores, working in summers at mom and dad's shop, I have that entrepreneurial spirit in me through my parents. So when they were launching their business, I was their advisor, operations and construction, as well as helping with anything relating to permitting or capital raises for their initial needs. So I was intimately involved with their upstart. So that's when I decided to kind of venture off and had this idea of the Stories Company. So despite, you know, decision-makers and states pushing for social equity and an inclusive industry, in reality, it's just very difficult for someone who has this drive and vision to end up in, as a cannabis owner in the future. So I came up with this concept of the Stories Company, which is on top of being a very, you know, education, science, and healthcare-focused company, it would be very entrepreneurial in spirit. So the plan and the vision is to sort of have two tracks that enable us to be a platform for entrepreneurs. One is this entrepreneurship and residency-focused track, where we take on individuals who want to have a career or potentially even be future cannabis operators or owners of their own business, and give them a full behind-the-scenes view into what we do, how we do it, and how it can be successful. In addition to the entrepreneurship and training program, we also are gonna have a product line that is inspired by individuals with unique and positive stories as it relates to cannabis, and feature them on our products, and sort of put them in the spotlight as well. This is something I've been thinking about for three years. And I'd just like to thank everyone for giving the opportunity to present today.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. My name is, I'm Yash Patel. I'm a chief educational officer, both for Uma Flowers as well as for the Stories Company. I'm a cardiologist at Brown. I practice there. I did my fellowship from Harvard as well as from Mount Sinai in the city. As David said, I'm a strong proponent of the opiums as well. My background in the company is to like make sure that we have a certain education that has been provided to our customers once they come to our shop. Everyone talks about education, right? I mean, like, people can say that, you know, we are there to give the education. But what we try to do at Uma Flowers as well as for the Stories is to give the education to the customer based on the science. This is what our backgrounds are. This is what we've all studied for, you know, 30-plus years, and this is what we wanna apply. At the same time, I would tell you that, you know, our folks, our like parents, came from India. They work really hard. They are still like owners, operators of their shops, convenience stores still at this day and age. That's what we envision to be at our stores on a day-to-day basis. There are about 260 dispensaries out there in the state of Commonwealth. Of them, about one-fourth or like one-third of them, they are just trying to flip it. We are not that group. What we are trying to promise to the town today is what we are gonna commit to that. We are here for a long run, and that's what we envision ourselves at.
Thanks, Yash. So we also have Priyanka Patel, who's Yash's wife, and she was a co-founder of Uma Flowers. They just know all about the operations, gonna keep moving. And we have John Belson. He's our project manager. He also, he's a general contractor, although he doesn't necessarily fill that role, and he helps build these things out. And then now we also have Ed Davis.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Manager. My name's Ed Davis. I live at 90 Fraser Lane in Tewksbury. I run a security consulting business in Boston. And I've actually been involved with a number of these startup companies, going back to Howie Kessler and the first one that was opened in Massachusetts, in Northampton, and then in Brookline. And Kessler was an investor, and I did, I did due diligence for him. So I had to take a critical look at the plans of these companies. And I've been with a number of groups since then. But this is a really impressive group of individuals. This is not money coming in from Florida or Canada. These are local people who are interested in starting a business here, and they have the utmost education. I've got to know the owners, and I've been very impressed with their commitment to doing it right, to making sure that the businesses are run properly. A big part of my responsibility is to make sure that these businesses are compliant with the CCC regulations on security. And so that's sort of our starting point. But beyond that, we also look at traffic issues. We look at, you know, loitering issues. We look at a number of different disorder possibilities that sometimes plague these businesses, and make sure that we regulate those things out. A good example is the type of systems that we use in identifying young people and making sure that the IDs are legitimate and that no one gets in there underage. So it's a pleasure to be involved in the company, and it's a pleasure to talk to you all here in my own hometown. Thank you.
Your hangout wasn't quite as long.
And we also have the rest of the team. So we've executed, we've built out Pepperell, we've built out Lunenburg. And so we have a team. We have engineers, traffic engineers, architects. And this is just sort of, you know, their logos. But the point, the point here is with this slide is, if we're awarded a host community agreement, we press a button, and these guys go, you know? And we already have site plan approval, as the board knows. And so we'll execute quickly. Even though it's a ground-up build, we're gonna be open quickly. We have, we'll get to the funding, but we have the funding to do it. We're fully capitalized, and we have the team to do it as well. I personally, and then go to my next slide. This is me. I was a co-author of the ballot initiative that ended adult-use prohibition in Massachusetts. I've opened well over 100 of these businesses throughout the Commonwealth, whether it's cultivation, product manufacturing, dispensing. I know the ins and outs of the Cannabis Control Commission and the application process. I can basically recite it at this point. So should we be awarded a host community agreement, we're, it's really press a button and go. The main things you need at the Cannabis Control Commission to apply are a binding agreement on the property, and we have a purchase and sale, and a host community agreement certification form from your municipality. So we have one, and we're here seeking the other. I'm gonna speak quickly because we don't wanna, yep. And so the SDO certification, so the Supplier Diversity Offices gives a designation to, you know, women's business enterprises and minority business enterprises. And Uma Flowers has it now. It's essentially the same founders who are moving away from Uma Flowers into Stories Company, and they're gonna dedicate themselves just to Stories at this point because Uma Flowers is an operational happy ship that's steaming along on its own. And the SDO won't give you that certification until you get to provisional. You can begin applying for it, but we'll have the exact same letter, which actually gives you a priority review with the Cannabis Control Commission as well. So we will be certified MBE and WBE once we get a provisional license. So our proposed location, I don't think I have to beat this up further. We're perfectly zoned. We have the approval from the planning board. We have 39 parking spots on site. We're gonna get to zoning here in a second. You know, I don't wanna belabor this because you had another board already review all this stuff, and I know we're sort of anxious to move through. If there's any questions about the floor plan and security, how these things work, you got Ed and I here, and we can answer these things cleanly. But the basic point is that the way they operate Pepperell is they actually check an ID through like a video intercom before you can even go inside the building. So it's like an extra level of security. Lots of groups, you actually go into the secure vestibule, and that's the first time they check your ID. The way they operate Pepperell is before you go in, you show your ID to this, to this like video intercom. So it's an extra level of security. You know, unlike a liquor store, you know, in a cannabis dispensary, IDs are checked three times for Stories before anybody can make a purchase. So it's incredibly secure, and it's a big step to preventing diversion to minors. You know, this is a rendering of what we want the building to look like. On one side will be the Stories Company, 2,700 square feet. And then on the right side, if you're facing from the street towards the building, we have another, you know, retailer, some sort of retail operation. We don't care about that right now. We're citing Stories. This was all disclosed to the planning board. Our 28 required spaces include both operations, and we want, you know, we have 39. Interior renderings, if you, you're all welcome to come to Pepperell and check it out. It's kind of like an Apple Store. It's got this great wood feel. It's ultra-clean. You have people walking around the floor with iPads, talking to customers, asking them, they can place an order right there, and they can go up and finish the transaction at the counter. It's really got this like, sort of like, yeah, like an Apple Store feel to the way it is. It's fantastic. Financials, we have, you know, access to about $3.5 million. We have a letter of commitment from Smita Patel and Kashuk Patel. So a maximum loan of about $3 million. We have, we showed the bank accounts of a couple of the principals here. And so we're about $3.5 million to get this thing done. So we're sufficiently capitalized to open this up. I don't wanna belabor it. Our traffic impact statement, essentially, you know, the marijuana dispensary at 2,700 square feet, and this is based on IT data. So we all know that you take that with sort of a grain of salt, right? It's just IT data. But what it says is, and what's interesting is they have cannabis dispensaries, the actual vehicle trips are based on square footage of the dispensary, which to me doesn't really make a ton of sense. But at 2,700 square feet, you get 570 daily trips. And so on weekdays and 700 on Saturdays. Now, I know it's a congested road, Main Street, but really, in the grand scheme of things, you know, five, six, 700 trips is really almost negligible for that level of traffic, right? If we were running these people through a residential neighborhood, then you add an extra 700 cars to a residential neighborhood, obviously, that's a giant impact. But for a fairly congested street, you know, it's fairly negligible. Additionally, that spot right there, something's gonna go there, right? So if it's a Dunkin', it's gonna be way more than that. Any sort of retail use that's gonna be popular, whether it's a Dunkin' or, you know, a fast sort of bagel and coffee shop or whatever it is, any retail use is gonna add, you know, some hundreds of cars per day, right? So it's not like, I mean, you have a blank piece of dirt right now. It's not like it's just gonna stay that way forever. In fact, the planning board had previously approved a retail use at that spot, which was never built out. So instead of just looking at this like, oh my gosh, you're gonna add 600 cars per day to this heavily congested street, anybody's gonna add 600 cars per day to this heavily congested street. We just happen to be a cannabis use seeking to do it. So we're not doing some meaningful impact that's gonna greatly adverse traffic, impact traffic compared to any other use that's gonna go there. Compliance with zoning, I won't repeat this. We have 39 spaces, 28 required. We're fully compliant. The planning board approved us. So I won't go, you know, go any further with this stuff. So we have, Stories was awarded a host community agreement in Whitman. We're moving forward to, we've applied for provisional license, like I said. Once we get the host community agreement, we have purchase and sale on the property. We press a button, and we, we're applied to the state. So we're working on the rest of the local permitting in Whitman. Uma's open in Pepperell. We truly encourage the board to come. Tejal or Priyanka will give you guys a tour. You can see the back of the house, the vault, all the security measures. It's fantastic. There hasn't been one security issue there. So we have a little quick, you know, this is what it looks like in there. As soon as we get inside, I'll just skip through it so we don't waste too much time. But, so this is, you know, they scan your ID. I just want you to see the inside of the dispensary because it's really beautiful what they've done there. And so, yep, this is clearly during COVID. So this is sort of what the inside of the dispensary looks like. It's really just got this great wooden apple-feel store. You have dispensary associates walking around with iPads, taking orders and giving consumer education, you know? And I'm gonna keep going because of the interest of time. Another one in Lunenburg, this should be open. We've actually just applied for post-provisional license inspection, which means we have a certificate of occupancy from the town, and we're ready to get to final. We should be open in the next few months, depending on commission timing. So we also have, you know, a property in Athol that we plan on doing cultivation and product manufacturing at. That also is special permit and host community agreement from Athol. We have a provisional license there, too, if I, yep. Morristown, New Jersey. So this is an important part that I'm gonna stick with for a second. Tejal, do you wanna talk about this part?
Sure, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. So something that, at Uma Flowers, and something that we plan to do with Stories Company as well is be a positive impact on the community that we serve. So it's not just doing business in the town. We want to, what we've done in Uma Flowers and what we plan to do is work with charitable organizations to collect donations. And we've also, we've also worked with the local library to put on presentations about cannabis use. And if anyone has questions about it, they can ask that. So educational seminars, basically. We've done coat drives. We've done food drives during the holidays. So we really do try to do things that can give back to the small charities, any charities that would give back to the town. So we plan to do that with the Stories Company as well.
And this slide here, well, I will share this updated version of the deck. But this slide here shows all the, you know, a bunch of the different initiatives they've done. That's Priyanka and Tejal with Mr. McLean, the town manager, in Pepperell. So they've done a lot of, you know, local engagement. This isn't just about selling cannabis. These guys are super responsible operators and really wanna be part of the town. That's, when Yash mentioned that we're not just here to like get a license and flip it, that's the facts. They wanna be here and make it work. We love the site. So Frontline Initiatives is a company that we've been talking to. You know, and as we get closer, we can get into, you know, working on the strategic plan for universal substance dependence prevention in Tewksbury. We would just, you know, wanna get closer to at least a host community agreement, and they're gonna engage more with us once they see we're serious, too, right? I mean, anybody can go around and kick tires on charitable organizations, but once a town says, no, we're gonna work with you, then they're gonna, they're gonna engage. And so that's what we're really looking forward to doing that. Benefits to Tewksbury, you know, access to cannabis, 12 to 20 jobs, 3% local option tax. And then there's the host community agreement. And I understand the changes to 94G backwards and forwards if anybody has any questions about them. And I'm happy to talk about those as well. I don't wanna belabor it now unless there's an interest. This is sort of, you know, a very, very conservative estimate of sales here, I believe. So let's say we did 6 million, 3% would be 180,000. You know, another 30,000 just in straight philanthropy. And then another, depending on how the host community agreement stuff shakes out, another 180, you know, to, from the local option tax. So that's 6% total plus the 30, so that's 390 on a conservative estimate. If you do 300 customers a day at $85 a ticket at 350 days a year, you're just under 9 million. And that's a doable figure, 300 customers a day, you know? So we hope to do that much, and that's just more money for, but that's at a fairly, this is a fairly conservative estimate of what we'll do there, given the great volume of traffic that goes by that spot. And then also, our site plan is fantastic. We have ways in and out. We have tons of parking for, so overflow, so we won't get backed up onto the street in case there's a queue. People can come in and park in our lot, and we're not gonna adversely. People get there, they're gonna pull right in, and there'll always be a spot for them. So So we're really confident that our site works really well, as the planning board agreed. The Pepperell Police Department wrote a letter. We've been open there for about 18 months. They love us. The Pepperell Town Manager wrote a letter. We've been there for about 18 months. He loves us. You know, prevention to diversion to minors, I don't have to belabor this. It's in our materials. But we, you know, just the three ID checks, for instance, is just one step. We're not, you know, we're completely clear on that. We won't create a nuisance, no neon signs, no loud noise. We have, like I said, we have all that excessive parking. That's it. So thank you for letting us, you know, present to you, and we're happy to answer any questions the board might have.
And I'm sure we do have some. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
And we appreciate the concise way in which you presented that. So let me open it up to my colleagues. Anyone have questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Holland, you want to lead us off?
I just want to go back to the funding. You said you have access to capital?
Yes.
Other than the applicants, where is the other funding coming from?
So we have a letter of commitment from Davis's parents for 3 million. And there's also a 1031, I believe. So they have, you know, we have a letter of commitment. They have the money. And you know, if there's additional information that the board would like between now and the July meeting, we're certainly happy to supplement it to show more evidence of the availability of capital.
Okay. My next question is, has your previous organization had any violations?
No, not with the state or with the town.
And one last thing is, I don't see a signature on the tax compliance by the assessor. Is the assessor the one who?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see a signature on that.
We should have submitted one with a signature.
We can certainly supplement. I mean, we went to the assessor, and they gave, they're the ones who provided that to us. So we could, I can supplement, sure.
Yeah, it's blank, but you have another one for the Donut Village, and there's no tax compliance here. It just looks like a receipt.
I'm not sure what the Donut Village is.
The Donut Village is the current owner of the property. And I remember submitting this, so I'm going to have to double check.
Okay.
Yeah, we will absolutely send you one tomorrow, so you'll have that.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Okay, anyone else? Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I appreciate your application and the completeness of your application. Can you tell me a little bit more about the relationship between Uma Flower and Stories? Is there any relationship business-wise between the two, other than the individuals?
So the relationship is she's my wife, and the other founder is my sister. So that's the personal relationship. From a business standpoint, there is no, there's two entirely different companies, two entirely different operations, no intermixing of funds of any kind.
Okay, that was part of the question. So the $3 million that you referred to in answering Mr. Holland, is that from your other family members, your parents? That's not the other 3 million is not from Uma Flowers? Okay, I was confused when I saw that, so I'm glad we clarified that. In your mind, why do you feel this is the best location for Tewksbury?
Yeah, so we had been chatting about this a little bit earlier today. So the north, we're on the south side of Tewksbury. So the north side of Tewksbury is already served by nearby cannabis retailers. So this is more, sort of a more underserved population of Tewksbury. So that's the first why we chose sort of that area. We also kind of want to rejuvenate the area. That particular lot has just been this sort of blank piece of dirt, you know, for quite some time. So we think it's a great opportunity to build something there and to bring more people there. You know, people who buy cannabis have discretionary cash in their pockets. Cannabis isn't covered by insurance or anything. It's not cheap. People come in, you know, I opened up, I don't know, as many en masse, and one of them, one of them on the Lynn Way, they specifically wanted us there to sort of rejuvenate that area, right? Because it was sort of, you know, falling apart, and they wanted us. It's almost like an anchor tenant that I opened there. And I know Tewksbury is pretty much the opposite municipality from Lynn. But the point there is that it's sort of, it's an economic driver, right? So, you know, it's a highly commercial area, so it's totally an appropriate use there. Yeah, it's an unbuilt parcel, so we can make something from scratch. Like I said, we have plenty of parking because we can do it from scratch to absorb any queues, so they don't, they go out on the street. It was previously approved by the town for retail. We're able to purchase the property, which is something that, whenever possible, these guys do. They own property all around Massachusetts. And, you know, we met with the Butters, and you could see in our application, we provided letters of support. So largely, although, you know, of course, there's always some naysayers for any project, and those are usually the people that show up to meetings to speak up or the people that oppose a project as opposed to the ones that are supportive. But we did provide letters of support, and so we got, you know, a warm reception from our neighbors when we went and canvassed and when we knocked on doors, right? So that made us feel good about using that location. So those are sort of the summary of the reasons why we thought that was a great spot.
Okay, thank you for that. I noticed that you briefly touched on the fact that you're doing an additional retail space. Can you explain the sort of rationale behind this additional retail space? You're aware that we sometimes have too much vacant retail space in town. So if you can just kind of address that briefly.
Yeah, sure. So the whole, the building that we can put on that lot with also having all the sufficient parking and having, you know, the fire truck pull around, that was one of our big parts with the planning board. And we've finally satisfied the fire department, our engineer moved the building around and moved stuff, so we can have the big truck go around. So we have 5,400 square feet we could build. It's far more than you need for a cannabis retailer. So we decided to divide it in half, and in the future, we'll put a retailer there. We haven't decided exactly what, but my experience in the cannabis industry is there'll be a bunch of retailers that will jump at the opportunity to be next to a dispensary that pulls in 500 or 600 customers a day with a bunch of cash in their pocket. So we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but we feel like it's going to be an attractive location. It's going to be a freshly built, beautiful building. One of the things that's fun to Google is like marijuana dispensary architecture. Like, all these places are built really, really nice, right? And so we believe that, you know, we're going to be able to attract a quality retailer next to us. And so that's not something that we're particularly worried about. I know that the town does have an issue, and this came up at the planning board, with vacant spots on Main Street. But we're going to have a pristine, beautiful new building with all, you know, it's going to be green, you know, plug-in stuff and bike rack. It's going to be really nice. So we think we're going to be confident that we can find a quality retailer to put next to us.
Okay. So I have two more questions. And I know my colleagues will ask the other questions I have. The purchase price of this lot is not quite 50%, maybe 40% of your budget. What's the budget to build out this project in total after procurement of the land?
Say again, can you repeat the question?
After you purchase the land, what's the build out?
We're estimating anywhere from $1.5 to $2 million for the construction.
Okay. And how long do you think if you were awarded a license, it would take for you to get to open? If everything had to go smoothly? And I understand that that's not always the case.
Yeah, so, I mean, fortunately, Tewksbury has been great with their zoning, so we don't have to go back to the planning board for special permit, which is nice. We have the, you know, we have the site plan approval already. So that's going to move things forward a little bit faster. One of the things that is an unknown here is the Cannabis Control Commission. You know, and the Cannabis Control Commission's mandate was not just to open dispensaries and cannabis businesses. It was also to protect the public that doesn't like cannabis, right? So they like are very diligent about scrutinizing everything that we do, right? So they can be a little slower than you might like, you know, sometimes. You know, it's kind of like hurry up and wait with the CCC, right? They want something, you snap and get it to them, and then you sit and wait for a few weeks or even months. So, you know, and then there's like, you know, there's still recurring supply chain issues, right? So, you know, but, you know, I mean, I would think that, you know, a year or so to, you know, really finish construction and get to the later stages of inspection with the Cannabis Control Commission, you know, so maybe, you know, probably something like, you know, best-case scenario, 13 months? Realistic scenario, 18 months, you know? Like, that's probably our estimate. You know, I mean, I'd like to tell you that we'll be open in 10 months, but you know we're building a building from scratch, and, you know, and we have to get through all the inspections with the CCC. I suppose it's possible at 10, but especially because they're going to have the WBE, the SDO certification. So we're going to go top of the line with the CCC.
Okay, that's good to know. With your commitments on your slide to the town, you referenced the impact fee. And we understand how the 3% tax works, and I understand the charitable giving, and it's fantastic. With the new requirements under the HCAs, which you alluded that you
This is my favorite thing to talk about.
Please don't quote it in and out because we are, I've taken too much time for my colleagues. As it is, Chair is clearing his throat, so I know. But you, I know, but you indicated the 3% of the impact fee, which I don't think is quite right. Don't we have to sort of prove evidence of an impact to you, and then it's no greater than 3%? So I find that that number is sort of a really optimistic number.
Yeah, so I caveated it when I said that, right? I said, depending on how the commission shakes out, the changes to 94G. So I did try to make that caveat. I wasn't trying to tell you you're going to get the 180.
Right, so just for the folks at home to be aware, yeah.
But right now, towns or cities and towns are still collecting the 3%. The law went into effect last November, right? So the commission has said that they're going to give guidance or some sort of assistance on this by this November, right? But then, when does that even shake out? Like, we, it's just such, it's such an unknown, so we use that number. But yes, you're exactly right. So at the time of our renewal, you send us a bill, essentially. And we can either contest it or not contest it. And so, but that's, you know, I guess the big question for the commission is, which Mr. Montori probably is going to be interested in, too, is what is, what activities and what expenses are reasonably related to the operation of a dispensary? Right? And none of us know the answer to that, right? Your fireworks show certainly isn't, but a substance abuse counselor in your schools might be, right? Maintenance on the road outside of the dispensary where the increased traffic is, maybe that is. You know, we just don't know the answer to this stuff. And that's what everybody's sort of holding their breath and waiting for the commission to tell us. So once we have that, you know, we'll have a better info. But I didn't mean to be misleading with that slide. I tried to say it pretty directly, like, this is depends on what happens with the change to 94G.
I thank you very much for that. Thank you for your application.
Thank you. Mr. Krabman, do you have any questions?
Yes. Having an existing business, you've talked about, you know, concerns with some of the traffic out there, and this is in a busy area. What are your peak hours of operation in the other locations?
From Monday to Friday, our peak evening hours are about 4 to 7 PM. And then on Saturdays, and Saturday is there in the after, earlier afternoon, so like 1 to 4. And Sunday's the same thing.
Because you, you know, you talked about the number of trips that may be going in there. So should we expect between 4 and 7, you know, hundreds of trips going in and out during that time? Or it's like, you know, if you're going to get, if you're going to average, you know, 300 to 500 customers a day, 250, 300 of them coming in between 4 and 7?
Yeah, so let me read the slide here. So the weekday PM peak hour total is, excuse me, 51. So, you know, that's, and that's, that's two ways, right? So that's, you know, that's not 51 each 102. It's 51. It's 25, 26, you know, going back and forth. So that's the weekday PM peak hour total. So it's really not, you know, as egregious. I mean, I keep going back to the idea where you put anything else there, you're going to get vehicle trips. And we're not running these folks through a residential street. We're running these folks through a busy thoroughfare where this is going to be a drop in the bucket compared to all the cars that are going through there, right? We're not, there's no real meaningful impact based on, I know you work for MassDOT, so you're scrutinizing my words very clearly.
I love when somebody tells me that there's no meaningful impact. My favorite thing. But people were sitting in traffic at 3 o'clock finding meaningful.
Yeah, no, I get that, and that's why I think our parking lot also adds a lot of value to our proposal and our site, because people will have plenty of room to pull in, and we're not going to be backing people up onto the street.
Okay, and you were talking about 12 to 20 jobs for the location?
Something like that, yep.
Okay. The, I do have a little bit of concern with having a separate, I mean, I know you've got site plan approval, but having an unknown of another business that may be going in there is concerning. I have no idea what that may be. And, you know, you have quite a number of trip generation for what may be happening in there, and half the building could be something else. And once it's approved, it's approved. And, you know, then we have something, I have no idea what might go in there. I'm guessing there might be another business that may work off of it. But I, like I said, I'm just, it's just a guess. I have no idea. But having half a building that's empty that could possibly be anything that could bring a number of more trip generations without art listed on this is something that I just have some thought.
Yeah, so we do have them listed here. So a couple of things. In the approval, the 28 parking spaces required were for both businesses. So that was the first thing. Then we have the strip retail plaza number there, so that's additional 147, 19 vehicle trips in the PM peak hour, so it's 19 for that other. This is, like I said, IT data, right? It's like, whatever. But this is the best you have to go on. And so 19 vehicle trips, peak hour for that second business, which probably makes about sense. And then, so, but we, so we did add the numbers to our traffic impact statement. And I believe, and I could be wrong, but I'm fairly, I know that I requested the condition. I just don't have it open in front of me. But I believe that before we can put another business in, we have to go back to the planning board. And I think it's, I'm almost certain it's a condition in our site plan approval. It is. So we have to go back to the planning board and satisfy them that this new business isn't going to be excessive and is going to match what they approved, right? So it's not just, well, it's approved, it's approved. I can go throw in like whatever largest commotion, difficult business there is. We made it a condition of the site plan approval that I got to go back to them and tell them what it is, and then they're going to take that and look at the rest of the approval and what our estimates were and all this stuff. And they're going to say, okay, this fits for what we approved. Or no, this is way out of line. This is not what we thought about, and they're going to deny it. So we did make that a condition just to satisfy that concern.
That's all I have, Mr. Chan.
Okay, thank you. All right, some of my questions were asked and answered already, but I want to just follow up a little bit on, ask you to give me a little more color around the decision to build versus take on something that's pre-existing that you could renovate. And I'm sure it's a philosophical decision on your part, but I want to hear a little more color about that, if you would.
I'm going to let Davis and Yash jump in here, but I believe it's philosophical and just sort of the availability of what, you know, what there is, what was for sale, what was proper within the zoning, you know, what worked, right? We couldn't just go and buy any building out there. So I think that was probably part of it, but I know they also like to buy stuff and then build it up and make it what they want. But other than that, I'll let you go for it.
Val hit on it. The other part of it is, you know, we're here for a long period of time. We want to be here as a long-term operator. We'd rather be our own landlords than having to deal with a landlord that might not be as, you know, a good working relationship down the road. So it really comes down to that as the main factor. If we're going to be here 25 years, then we want to be able to be here for 25 years.
Understood.
At the same time, if I may add, you know, both the Uma Flowers locations in Pepperell as well as the Lunenburg, we had to work with the existing space. And, you know, when we thought about purchasing this lot in Tewksbury, you know, we had a long conversations with our architectural team to give the aesthetic feel to the surrounding constructions that is happening. So, you know, to come up with a design that is well-appreciated, not just to the eyes, but also to the customers that are going to shop with us, I think that was a major decision that we had to make at that time. So, yeah.
And we also think it might be beneficial to the town, too, right? We're going to take that vacant property, which is now just a piece of dirt. And then we're also going to hire, you know, local, I assume the HCA will have something like this. In a legal, nondiscriminatory manner, we're going to commit to hiring local contractors, local service providers during construction, everything, right? So we're going to pull permits. We're going to do all this stuff that's like going to be a boon to Tewksbury by building that up. It might make us open a few months later than somebody else. But the rest of our team and our qualifications and our history is going to make us, is going to make up for those few months because we just hustle right through this CCC process.
Well, and that's in part why I'm asking the question, right? Because we're comparing you to others, in some cases, not all, but some cases where it's more of what I would call a retrofit of an existing facility, right? So the timeline from CCC approval to open doors is a lot shorter. And, you know, I appreciate you have to build, so it's going to take some time.
So with the rehab projects in Lunenburg, for instance, it took longer to rehab it than our, because of the setbacks, they had to than our, because of the setbacks, they had to go with the existing footprint. And John Belson, the project manager, is like, can we not just tear this apart and build from scratch? It'll be quicker.
Great point. Yeah, so it's not all, yeah.
Yeah. It's not as nice as it would like to have.
It's not like you just throw some drywall up and put a safe in.
Understood, understood. I just, I wanted to get a little more color on that. So my other question, you've talked about Whitman and other locations that you're opening, so just clarify for me in your answer here, is that stories are Uma? And my second part of that question is, do you have concerns about, you've got a lot of irons in the fire, you're going to be opening a lot of businesses in the short term here, including potentially one in our community? So is there any risk here of spreading yourselves too thin?
Yeah, we totally get that. So everything other than Whitman and Tewksbury is Uma, right? And Tejal and Davis are not, they're, they're, Tejal stepping away, as soon as we get an HCA from you guys, it's, it's, you know, it's Tejal's, you know, it's Priyanka, right? So they're, they're family. They know exactly what's going on. It's not like we have to like surprise somebody. As soon as we get an HCA, if we're lucky enough to be awarded one, Tejal's stepping away and this is like, it's going to be, it's going to be Tewksbury and Whitman.
And I'd like to add, I work as a part-time physician at Rhode Island Hospital because this is a big passion of mine, and as time is needed in Whitman or Tewksbury, I will definitely be putting less shifts in at the hospital in order to make this a reality, get it up and running, give her all the support on operations, and then go back to the hospital, pick up more shifts.
We have a deep bench, right? We have all these engineers, I've been doing this, you know, since the path, I opened the first medical ones.
That's important to know.
Yeah, we have a deep bench and we have the experience and we're super efficient at it. So it's really only two retailers that we're talking about. It's not like this whole huge volume of other projects. We bring those up because Tejal was integral in, in opening and getting them licensed, and they show our experience, but this is it, right? It's here and Whitman, you know, so it's not, it's not that voluminous.
Understood, okay. So you showed us a few moments ago some projections on, you know, year one, two, and three revenue. And I'm just comparing what I saw on the screen to what you submitted. And the numbers are, you know, 40% in here to what you have up there. So I'm just, talk to me about projections, right? What's realistic here in terms of the 6 mil, in this case, 3.5 mil?
Yeah, so we, we try to be, you know, overly conservative. I don't think, you know, we're, we're quality operator with the experience, we have all the connections to get the products, you know, half the, the quality cultivators and product manufacturers, not half, but a lot of them in Massachusetts are my clients, right? They already have the supply chain because of, because of Uma. So we try to be conservative because we think, we felt like overpromising makes us look ridiculous, you know? But I think I threw out some numbers before which are fairly conservative, they fit with the, with the, with the IT data, you know, and so that's why this is conservative. At 300 customers a day, at $85 a ticket, which is about the average ticket, and then 350 days a year, that gets us to 9 million, right? So, and so that this is like really conservative, and then our numbers there were even more because it's just like overpromising so that a municipality sees, oh, this is what I'm going to get next size tax, and I could write 27 million on there and it's just, it's kind of nonsense, right? So, you know, we're just sort of juggling with conservative, conservative estimates because we don't.
So you'll rest on those numbers and you and your clients view are conservative numbers?
I think, I mean, I think they're, they're probably, they're probably about, you know, fairly conservative. It's, it's a third, you know, it's two thirds of the, of the 300 customers, so, you know, it's 200 customers a day. You know, it's fairly, I mean, but the problem is, one, it's tough to do right now because we don't know, so Tewksbury gives out three HCAs, but then one of them stalls because they don't have the, the funds to do it like we do. Another one stalls because they have a butter lawsuit and they don't decide to proceed at their own risk, and we're the only one, then all of a sudden those numbers are higher. All three crank out and get open, then they're lower, right? So it's like, to give a quality number here is like, you know, it's, it's very difficult to really do.
I just want to reconcile those two in my mind.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so let me just ask you a couple of other questions. There's, everyone you've identified as on the team, ownership, your parents, that's the extent of investors in this project, right? There's nobody else that we need to be aware of?
There's no outside interest. It's a family business, 100%.
Perfect, okay. And then my last question is, if for some reason this board chooses to give licenses to other parties, we don't award one to you, do you have any intention of working with any of the other applicants? Have you had any of those conversations?
No, that's a loaded question. So we, we haven't yet, but I mean, these guys are willing to entertain, you know, almost anything. I think one of the things is, I mean, we obviously want the license, right? You know, I mean, I, you know.
I'm not trying to infer anything, I'm trying to make sure we understand what relationships exist.
Yeah, well, we, we don't know, we don't know the other proposal. I mean, over the years, I've been doing this since day one in Massachusetts, when we've been around like different meetings and stuff, I, I recognize people, hey, Valerio, what's up? Right, I recognize some of the other applicants and operators, but we don't have a deal with them. If there is a social equity applicant that's, that's coming in, you know, this is sort of the point of stories, right? As Davis spoke about it, you know, one is to bring people in and give them management training and training in operating a dispensary so they can fly away and like be successful on their own. The other one is to bring in, you know, people who have a, an understanding of the plant and have created cannabis products over the years, who might need the, you know, the funding and support and bringing their products into, so that's sort of the point, right? But, I mean, I don't, I don't want to like cut myself at the knees by saying that we're, you know, we don't want a license, we're willing to work with somebody else.
I don't want you to. Okay, I appreciate that. All right, I'm going to turn to public comment at this point, and if there's anyone in the room who wishes to offer comments on this particular application, this is the opportunity to come to the podium and speak. I am going to ask you to please be to the point and brief. I want to try to keep this on time for us, we have other hearings to tend to. And as I said at the beginning, we are going to continue this hearing so there'll be other opportunity to add any insights. So if you don't mind, for the record, our recording secretary is invisible behind the curtain, so please give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Lyons, with my wife Bernadette. We own Dandelions, which is directly across the street from the location. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and our perspective is a little different. We, we object to the, the allowance of this permit, and, and I hope you give me an opportunity to go into it a little bit. At the chairman, at the planning board committee meeting, they kept the comments very narrowly focused, which I totally respect. In the last four months, we've had an opportunity to deal with the building department and the planning department. And I want you to know that those folks have been extremely courteous, professional, and very responsive to every single thing that we've asked them. So I just want to go on the record to make sure that you folks understand how professional the organization is, and that's a tribute to the, to the town manager. But there are two things that I really want to point out. We have an awning at our store at Dandelions, we've been there for 31 years, we've had hundreds, if not thousands, of young teenagers work for us over those 31 years. And recently, that awning kind of wore out, kind of like me, kind of getting worn out. And I had to go before and, and get a, a permit to put the awning back up. And to me, it seemed a little bit, why do I need to put a, a permit? The awning's been there for 30 years, it hasn't fallen on anybody yet. Well, I had a conversation with the building inspector, and he was pretty straightforward. He said, we have to do this to protect the public, to protect my customers. Totally made sense. We got the permit, we got stamped documents, we put the awning back up. At the planning board meeting, I had the opportunity to discuss, I wanted an opportunity to discuss what really is my objection to this particular project. And the chairman, despite my trying to weave around him a little bit, kept it very, very narrow. And I respected that. Disagreed, but respected it. But interestingly enough, that night I was asked a question, and the question was, would I have any objections if it was a candy store? I had to take a step back because I couldn't answer that question being constricted by the rules of talking about parking and traffic and those other issues. I couldn't get to what I wanted to talk about, but tonight I hope you allow me to do it.
And I'm going to ask you to get right to it.
Thank you very much.
I'm waiting for what you're objecting on.
This project is not compatible with this neighborhood, number one. We cater to children, to teenagers, to families. The donut shop is the same type of a, of an environment. The mini golf, the arcade, it's a family pot of that community. Folks, I'm also going to talk about the 800-pound gorilla in the room. Cannabis is not candy. It is not candy. Massachusetts drug use among teenagers is number two in the nation. Doctors, doctors are telling us, now we know the real problems that exist because of cannabis use. The legislature, despite the fact that I voted against this legislation, gave local communities the ability to control what happens in their towns. Folks, drug use in Massachusetts is on fire. In 2013, there were 950 overdose deaths. Today, that number has increased by 150%. The reason I bring it back to 2013 is because in 2013, a young boy in the adult died of a heroin overdose, 17 years old. What was he doing three months before? He was smoking weed. What was he doing three months before that? He was smoking weed. Folks, they can make the argument all they want. Is it a gateway drug? Isn't it a gateway drug? Every one of us in this room understand firsthand what fentanyl drugs are doing to our communities. I'm not saying that these people, that they, they've got all the statistics. Folks, the reason we have local control is to protect our kids. All those young kids that are coming to our store, all those young kids that are going to the arcades. I know they're not going to go in and buy at that cannabis shop, but folks, they're going to see it. They're going to see it. Putting this cannabis shop across the street from an ice cream store that's been in business for 31 years is not compatible with what we've been doing for 31 years. I urge you to reject this application. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there, I'm Bernadette Lyons, and I am the woman owner of Dandelions. So, you know, I know that you try to push that, but, you know, I've been there for a while. So I hope you'll bear with me for a minute. When, when a few years back, I was on a criminal case, and it was a young man named Angel, of all things, who was selling cannabis in front of a convenience store. And he was in the parking lot and he was caught dead to rights. I mean, I was on the jury, we, there was no, there was no doubt this kid was selling cannabis. But the thing that stuck out in my mind was that we were told by the judge that there was a school that was, you couldn't see it from the parking lot, it was behind gates and, and trees, and the entrance was way, way, way off from, from where this kid happened to be caught. But we had to find him guilty of selling within a school zone because Massachusetts takes seriously protecting kids. So this kid went to jail for at least two years because of that law, and rightfully so. But now in Tewksbury, we're going to put a cannabis shop right across the street from an ice cream store? I don't see how that is compatible with, you know, what as a town you've tried to do. I know you put up the purple lights on the, um, excuse me, on the gazebo for the drug overdose, but if you take it seriously, if you take this seriously, you will not allow them to put their shop in a family-oriented place like ours. There are other places in Tewksbury, industrial zones, near highways, where there's no kids riding bikes, where there's no families sitting outside at the picnic tables that will see that, that cannabis shop every day. It's, it's not right, and that's just, you know, what I have to say.
I appreciate that, and that's why we have three licenses here in Tewksbury to consider distributing to qualified operators, and we have nine applicants or eight applicants for those three. So your comments, your comments are appreciated.
Can I say one more thing?
One last thing, okay?
Yes. When, when the lawyer there mentioned that they had canvassed the neighborhood, they never came, they never canvassed to us except to come to offer to buy our property, and they said that they were doctors that were going to, you know, just see patients. So they, they did it in an underhanded way, and maybe they got support from people because they lied about it. Thank you.
Well, I, you came tonight and you expressed your view, so thank you. Sir?
My name's John Murphy, I'm a resident of Tewksbury. I got a question for Mr. Davis real quick. He said you check IDs.
Just ask it to me, sir, okay?
Oh, to you, right. I got a question. They said they check IDs three times, they showed a video of them checking it. One guy checking it once on a camera and the same guy checking it sitting inside. So would there be, where would the other checks be? That's my question.
So, Mr. Davis, our counsel, if you can expand on that?
They're checked outside.
Just bring that mic down.
We didn't see it on the video, it started on the inside, but they're checked outside via a video intercom. Then you walk into that secure area, you have to get buzzed into the dispensary proper, but there's a secure vestibule, and they slide the ID and scan it at that point to make sure, a couple of things, you haven't bought in excess and that you are, that it's a valid ID. And then once you get inside, you make your purchase, and at the time of your purchase, you actually have your ID checked for a third time. So everybody who purchases from Uma Flowers and Pepperell, we're going to run the same way here, has their ID checked three times, whereas some dispensaries, they only do it twice, they don't do that video intercom, look at the ID.
Okay.
Yeah.
Over here, sir, okay? I don't mean to be rude.
He's saying three times, but if the person sitting in that seat is the same person looking at the intercom and then checking the ID and feeding it into the scanner, that's one check. Checking it at your counter would be two. I don't see where the third check would be.
Okay. Your point's made.
That's, that's my question.
Your point's made.
My other, I agree with the Lyons, I'm all for businesses in town, but next to Donuts Donuts, which we all know is full of kids all the time, next to the, across the street from Mini Golf Arcade, drive-in movies for families, and an ice cream shop, not to mention, it's on Route 38, not anywhere near a highway. You're going to have two, that's it, two lanes, two roads, two lanes coming in and out. You're going to have exactly what is going on, where they said, we, North Tewksbury has already served, yes, by Smith Cannabis and Lowell maybe, which anyone who's driven by there knows, it's a, it's a traffic nightmare, an absolute nightmare.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else? Okay. And I want to thank you folks for being here and offering your perspective on your application and the information you shared, my colleagues for their questions, and certainly members of the public that have concerns about this particular application for their input and feedback. As we did last night, what I'm going to do is ask for a motion to continue this hearing to July 18. And that's being done for a couple of reasons. We think that as we go through this process over the next week or so, and meeting with all of the proponents for various licenses, we may have some follow-ups that we learn along the way, and we might want to circle back with you. That's point one. Point two is, we may want to develop some additional information on what you gave us tonight in follow-up. And, and three is, we very much want to give members of the community who may not be in the room tonight an opportunity to weigh in. I had a couple of emails before we sat down tonight from residents saying, can I express opinion about what we saw last night? And the answer to those people who are inquiring is absolutely. We'll take emails, letters, send them in to the town here, at the town manager's office, the select board's office, and, and the colleagues and I will, at the board level here, will consider that information. So we want to give people an opportunity to do that. And then we will reconvene here on And then we will reconvene here on July 18, and we will figure out what we're gonna do with our three licenses.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a technical question. If we wanted to submit any supplemental information, would that go to?
Through the town manager, yes. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep, and I know you're gonna follow up to Mr..
Yeah, that's why I was asking, I wanted to make sure I knew where to send it.
So with that said, can I ask for a motion to continue this hearing to July 18?
So moved.
All right, so we have a, for our recording, Secretary Ms. Wellman offered the motion. Mr. Kratman seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote aye as well. So that will be a unanimous four to zero vote, and we will see you or talk to you again very soon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, we appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Torrey.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to our next hearing at 7:00 PM. And this particular hearing pertains to collective premium cannabis, or Community Care Collective. I'll read the hearing notice while you get set up.
Thank you.
All right. Notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Select Board Regulation Article 37, Marijuana Retail Sales License Policies and Regulations on June 13, 2023, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall 1009 Main Street, Tuxbury, Mass. 01876, on the application of Community Care Collective, Inc., doing business as Collective, for a license to operate as a marijuana retailer on premises located at 1693 Shawshene Street, Tuxbury, Massachusetts, consisting of an area of approximately 4,148 square-foot building. We always ask for input from the public, and in this case, the deadline was requested Friday, June 9. We have a copy of the abutters list with maybe 10 or 12 abutters that have been notified of the hearing, as well as a copy of the legal notice that was posted and dated May 24, 2023. And I don't know if you gentlemen were in the room when we started the evening, but I'm gonna ask if you can help us. We're gonna try to keep this to an hour. We're gonna continue the hearing, you just heard that. There's no question in my mind about that. I'm sure my colleagues are gonna bend my arm to do that, because we've done that four times now. So we're learning. But what I'd like you to do, if you can, is we'll spend about 15 minutes or so. If you can give us the high points, we've all read this document and gone through it, so we don't need to repeat everything, but tell us what we need to know, what you want us to know. That's important. And then I'm sure my colleagues will have a few questions, and if anyone here of the three people sitting in the room have any questions, we'll give them a chance to ask some questions too, okay?
Great.
So I wanna welcome you, and if you can start with just an introduction, that'd be great.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, my name's Dave Giannetta, I'm the owner and CEO of Collective Premium Cannabis. Next to me is our COO, Joe Barilla. And I'd like to just start off by just doing a brief introduction about Collective. So we're a locally-owned business. I live in Littleton, and formerly from Bedford, so born and raised in Mass. We have two operational retail marijuana dispensaries, one in Bill Ricka, next door, and one in Littleton. We definitely pride ourselves on the fact that we are the first licensed retail establishment who opened two dispensaries in one weekend. So that was a great feat. That was in March of 2022. So it took a lot of work, but, you know, we prepared accordingly, and it was a success. We have since structured a team consisting of 64 full-time and part-time employees. We expect to add to that employee count by about approximately 20 to 25, mostly full-time, but also some part-time employees at our Tuxbury location. We have a core executive team who oversees the daily activity. We've done this with a lot of purpose, myself included, the first one in every day, sometimes the last one out of the executive staff. I'm a pretty hands-on guy, Joe is as well, and all of our executive staff. We've put a lot of managers in place so that in my absence, in Joe's absence, we still have all operations covered. So we have assistant managers for the stores themselves. We have inventory, director of inventory personnel, who handles both locations. We have assistant directors of inventory, who manage their respective locations. We have shift supervisors, we have a director of security, all our employees, so no third parties. Again, Collective is owned by myself. I have a background in construction and real estate. We built our Bill Ricka location from ground up, so we know what that's all about. We've also fit out an existing space, which is our Littleton location, which happens to be a very similar type building as our proposed location at 1693 Shawshene. So what I'd like to do is just a brief, it's a virtual tour of 1693 Shawshene Street. It'll just give you a better visual of exterior, interior, and proximity to Route 93. Okay, so our location, as mentioned, 1693 Shawshene Street. It's an existing building. MDR Construction occupies a portion of the building and will occupy the balance. We have an executed lease with the owner. It's a 10-year lease, followed by two five-year options. We're located in the industrial district. There are no residential abutters. Very easy and quick highway access. We're only a half-mile off Route 93. We're set back approximately 125 feet from Shawshene Street. We're, as mentioned, an existing standalone building. So we're requiring an interior fit-out and very minor exterior improvements, such as sidewalks out at the street, which we've agreed to with the planning board and engineering, and also sidewalks leading to the entry and exit. We don't expect there to be an in-depth effort to obtain a building permit, so we can move this right along. We're positioned away from any school zones or areas where children commonly congregate. We have 38 leased parking spaces. No lines expected with an expanded secure vestibule inside. We have, we're an adequate distance from the plaza. So just being that far away from the plaza gives us minimal traffic impact. And we expect a pretty short term to market. This space is very similar, as mentioned before, to our Littleton location. We obtained a building permit in July of '21, and we were open in March of '22. So we moved quickly, and that was with the Cannabis Control Commission canceling their December meeting, which they only hold one meeting per month. And we still made it March of, early March '22. So our mission, we will provide the finest-grade cannabis to our customers. Our cannabis is produced locally and lab-tested for safety, potency, and consistency. We expect to employ an equal-opportunity professional staff. We'll have a focus toward Tuxbury residents. We currently have two Tuxbury residents working at Collective. And those residents and employees will educate consumers on safe cannabis consumption and will provide educational literature focused on health benefits and relaxation. We expect to provide quality cannabis. The products will be labeled cannabis for adult use at an affordable price. We'll also develop a strong community partnership with the town of Tuxbury and work with the town of Tuxbury with any underfunded organizations where we may be able to help. So key components to a successful licensed retail establishment, our opinion is, if you don't have these, then you're really not prepared to open, you know, such a business. Location and parking capacity, we've gone through those details. Experience in the cannabis business, as we mentioned, we have two local dispensaries. We have a great track record with our local municipalities and also with the Cannabis Control Commission. One example of that is, we have had two surprise inspections, they do happen, and we have had zero deficiencies. And we asked them, what is the average that you're seeing? And they said five, five deficiencies per inspection. We have zero. Wholesale supply, that's extremely important. If you don't have those relationships, you will not have a robust menu. You will not drive customers. There's a lot of competition out there. We do, we have over 32 licensed cultivation, cultivation and manufacturing experts who we purchase our products from. And then also multiple layers of executive staff. I think that's very important, that you're well-protected in the event of any of our absences, which we do feel confident that we are in that position. So our proposal to the town of Tuxbury, we would expect an average of $300,000 per year to be generated to the town of Tuxbury through our gross sales. Local ownership, you know, I made this statement before to the town of Bill Ricka and town of Littleton, and we stand behind it, we're not the Walmart of cannabis, all right? We're very local, we're tangible, we're there every day. Community outreach hours and assistance with town educational programs. So we actually worked with the town of Bill Ricka's substance abuse coordinator. That's something, just an example of something that we would be willing to do and work with the town of Tuxbury. And then also just creating equal-opportunity employment for Tuxbury residents and vendors. I'm not gonna go through this list, but this is a snapshot of donations in our roughly 15 months of operation. We've donated a fair amount of hours of community service. Also donated to the Bill Ricka food pantry, as well as a financial donation. And as you can see, we have donated other, in other financial areas to each of these above. What sets us apart? So we do maintain the obligation to educate our customers. We are dedicated to providing educational opportunities to qualified customers, as well as the general public. We do have rock-solid financials as we are operating. We expect a rapid revenue stream for the town of Tuxbury, simply based on our experience, based on the fact that we have an existing building, and we have the experience to move through permitting and also construction. We have established local banking relationships. We have wholesale supply relationships with over 32 different cultivation and manufacturing suppliers. Charitable donations to programs in the community, and also the voluntary community service hours by Collective employees. Joe's gonna take over the security of facility.
So with the security of our facility, we try to work very closely with the Tuxbury Police Department to ensure the development of a plan that works for us, but also satisfies the town and that the police feel very comfortable with. We always have a minimum of one to two onsite security officers present for the hours of operation, and they are employees of ours. We don't use a third party. We do enforce a positive identification through an ID Veriscan, so we're doing it physically and mechanically to verify any of the IDs coming into the building. All our transportation and delivery processes are secure and through an approved third-party vendor that's approved through the state. Burglar alarm systems to protect the building, video surveillance inside and out. So basically, once you're, you know, we always say, if you can see the building, the building can see you. So once you're within kind of that property, we're able to monitor who's coming close to the building, what's happening, and as well as inside. All of our properties are electronic access control through a key card system, and then there, all the storage of onsite product is money is done through safes and, again, monitoring through electronics and surveillance. The next one is the anti-diversion measures that we take. So our security personnel are trained to be aware of and observe for any unusual behavior in a customer that may indicate a potential exists for diversion. We follow strict adherence to permitted amounts of products sold. This is done through our point-of-sale system, so it makes sure that you're not selling over the allotted amount for the day. We have a three-step customer identification verification procedure to prevent against diversion. Upon arriving, our customers, so they're preventing, they're presenting their ID physically for someone to look at and examine, then it's run through a machine to be scanned to verify. And then, once inside, at the point-of-sale, a person doing their, their actual transaction is physically checking it again. In the event that someone observes suspicious behavior, that's brought right to a manager, and it's dealt with on the spot. Nothing will be sold to that person, and whatever the next step has to be, whether it's contacting the authorities, that procedure's taken. Our dispensary agents are trained to refuse to dispense to customers if there's any concern to the public that would place them at risk.
So that's it for now. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Let me open it up to my colleagues first.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kratman.
So you're sharing the use with the construction company, MDR. Right now, they have numerous construction vehicles that are on this premise. Is this gonna, I know you're talking about the parking spots and what you'll have available, but if they have active construction equipment going in and out of here, how are you gonna manage that?
So we put together a transportation plan as part of our peer review that we had, done by Vaness and Associates, and they had approved that as part of our site plan approval. But just to give a little background on that, when, while we have security present on the exterior, which is part of our daily operations anyway, they will also assist in any coming and going of, you know, any of the existing trucks. I had this conversation with Mr. Secconi, our landlord. He assured me that their typical hours of operation are to have a truck exit around 6:00 AM, which we're not open at that time, and then they'll typically arrive back at 4:00 PM. So there may be a total of four to five trucks that we have to help manage, which we feel that we have no issue doing that with our trained security, who will be present on the exterior of the building anyway. And, you know, this would be consisting of, say, a low bed, or, you know, an 18-wheeler backing, I'm sorry, a 10-wheeler backing down the front side of the building, and we will assist with moving that truck towards the rear of the lot. Equipment-wise, Mr. Secconi also suggested that there would be another location for them to move a lot of their equipment. So the frequency and, you know, how common this will be is gonna lessen as, you know, as he sees approvals in this department, he's likely gonna shift his business to accommodate.
That's something I'd like to see more information on. That's something I'd like to see more information on. From what I can see, traveling by this numerous times, you know, that his construction business tends to work, you know, construction hours, nine to three, whatever it may be, some night hours, I guess, but he leaves most of his vehicles there at nighttime. So, when he gets done with the construction, his vehicles are parked at this location at nighttime. So, from what I'm listening to, a lot of the operations of these things, these businesses, seems like a lot of the hours of operation tend to be later. So, if this place is filled with parked commercial constructed vehicles, and then it's taking up a lot of your spots.
Sure, if I can. Our understanding from Mr. Secconi is that the overnight parking piece of his equipment and his trucks is the part that he's going to move to this other site that he's secured, because there is, that doesn't work with the overlap. And where we're taking over what were bays, and those bays were used for those trucks, we won't have that use there. That whole, what I understand was that's where his mechanics were, are going to shift and won't be, won't be happening there. So, this other site is where the overnight parking of those trucks and all those items will be. And again, that, if you look on the site plan where our front door is, they're only going to have to come through that area in an event it's a vehicle that they can't go. When you, if you look at the building to the right side, there is room for passage of the majority of his construction vehicles to go around the right side. It's only a couple of the larger ones that are an issue of coming down there. So, in the event it's a larger one, but all the other stuff will be able to come in, go to the right, around the right side of that building, and then come out that way without impacting us. But as far as the storage of them, what we've worked out in our lease deal is that those vehicles wouldn't be being stored there at all during our operating hours.
Storing commercial vehicles on a lot, not an easy task. There's not a lot of businesses or locations that will allow commercial vehicles to be stored on a location. So, if you could provide more information of where that might be taking place, so that, maybe I'll get a place, but I'd like to see something that is substance, that he has a location.
It's already secured. We, our understanding is that it's already been purchased, and so it's in his possession, and it's outside of Tewksbury. We will get more information, though, and clarify that. We'll speak to Mr. Secconi and ask if he could provide some form of a statement, or just provide us more information that we can share.
Sometimes you need local approval to approve that, and if that's something that takes some time to get, that may be something that be, you don't want them looking for.
Understood.
And the other thing is, I know you talked about installing a sidewalk out in front of here. This is a, I know we've done some work up there. There's some talk about doing some more work. There's another parcel right over the border in Andover, talking about doing some construction work up there. That may be something that may to be developed in the near future. One of the things that we ask them to do, if they do it, is to bring the sidewalk down there. We, as the town, has installed the sidewalk, but the sidewalk only goes on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
My concern is, if you're putting a sidewalk there, like, and this is a very busy intersection, is there like a safe crossing to get across if you provide a sidewalk? Will there be like a, has anybody looked at, you know, maybe providing a crosswalk to get, I don't want kids running from one side to the other without some sort of safety precautions.
So, it's ironic that you asked that question, because that was one of our proposals to the planning board, that, you know, sidewalks are great, and we were in agreement with sidewalks. However, where there was already a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, we had proposed a crosswalk would be a fair compromise. Where we've already committed to sidewalks, you know, I would say we would also commit to a crosswalk that would come from our sidewalk. It would have to be a handicap accessible, you know, off of our sidewalk to the crosswalk and across the street to the opposite sidewalk that's there. So, we'd be, you know, happy to do that during the construction of the sidewalk work that we're doing, anyway.
I know there's a couple of local businesses that are nearby, and much like, many, I've reviewed a number of permits in other ways, and I've seen people build CVSs, I've seen people build Walgreens. Their parking lot tends to get a little bit busy. What do people do? They park across the street.
Yeah.
So, there's a gas station, there's another place. I wouldn't be surprised if somebody decides to, hey, listen, I'm going to fill up my car, I'm going to go get a coffee, and instead of driving over there, I'm going to walk over.
Yeah.
And go get what I need, and then go back and forth across, just for ease of access to go across. So, that, any kind of safety things, that would be, I know Planning Board has a say on that, but that's something that I would.
So, yeah. I would, I would expect we would be able to add that as a condition to the HCA, but if it cannot be a condition in the HCA, what we would be open to is, because I know that the site plan literally today was filed with the clerk, we would still be willing to amend that if that was something that the Planning Board was open to, to add the crosswalk in addition to the sidewalks we've already agreed to, which are one of the conditions in our site plan approval. So, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone on this side?
Yes, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Holland, you go first.
Capital resources.
Capital resources.
Yeah. How are you financing? Are you doing it's personal money, or?
Through our own revenue, correct.
Your own revenue from the other stores?
Yeah, through company revenue, through our two dispensaries that we own.
And what do you expect this to cost you?
We expect to be in the million-dollar range.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, one more question, actually, two more questions. I just want to go back to where the two surprise inspections?
Yes.
Can you tell me what they inspect?
Yes. Thorough inspection. So, they go through all of your operation procedures, and they want you to walk them through those procedures. So, we treat them like a customer, basically, and walk them through every step that we take. Then, in addition to that, and I'd say about seventy-five percent of the inspection is around money handling and inventory control, and how you do that. They come through with a scanner, similar to like a grocery store scanner, where you can scan each individual grocery item. They'll go into our vault, and they will scan somewhat arbitrarily to see if a metric tag does not show up on their scan, and if it doesn't, then that's a concern. They want to understand, why do you have product in your vault that is not clearly identified and can be tracked? Joe, do you want to add to that? Because you've been actually present a few of these as well.
Basically, they show up, they come to the door, and they want you to, like Dave said, bring you through as a customer. So, you're going to go through the stages of security, bring them in. Once they've gone through that process, they kind of want to see the backend operation. So, at that time, you'll do an inventory scan. These, what Dave was referring to is a metric tag that comes with every product group. That actually has like an RFID tag in it. So, they walk in that vault, and they can scan that entire room and pick up everything that's in there. At random, they will pick a handful of items and tell you to go grab those items, bring them to the table, and they will go through and inspect them to make sure they all match. Once that's done, they'll go through your money handling procedures, check your vaults, how you're doing that, and then they'll go into a security audit, which is a little more backend. We do that on the computer. We'll actually dive into our video surveillance. We'll go back. They'll pick a random date, a couple of months back. They'll have us pull up some footage. We'll review that footage. We'll freeze it. We'll print a picture of someone in it. So, they basically do like a full compliance check at that time to make sure you're operating within all the boundaries, all your signage requirements that have to be throughout, all your door access control, that your personnel's wearing the appropriate IDs. They will actually sit down and go through every single employee and make sure that they are background-checked, their ID matches up, it's up-to-date, and we will go through all of our sixty-four employees at that time. So, it's, it can be, you know, sometimes a between two- and four-hour process to kind of pick through all of it. And then, it's usually what, within a week, we get a report of if they found any deficiencies, things we need to correct, anything like that. So, we've done that at both stores, neither of which we've come up with any deficiencies.
So, when they show up at you doing, you treat them as customers. Do you know they're there for an inspection?
Not until they tell you. No, not until they tell you at that moment. So, usually they get to security, they'll show their ID, and then they'll say, we need someone from management, and they'll show them an ID that says, we're from the state, we're here from an inspection, and it happens at that moment. So, there's no prior notification.
So, that, I was getting to the point, so if you've had no violations selling to minors or anything?
No.
Okay. That's, that was where I was going with this. So, I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Wilman?
Thank you. My colleagues have answered some of my questions, or asked some of the questions, and you've answered them, so I appreciate that. Thank you for coming today. I appreciate the completeness of your application.
Thank you.
My colleague asked you what your budget was for your build-out. You said about a million dollars. How long do you think it'll take you to achieve that? All things going normal.
Start to finish and opening?
Yeah.
Okay. So, depending on time of year, because notoriously, the CCC will cancel their December meeting. But let's just say, without December in play, we would expect about six months' time. So, from the time of receiving a provisional license, the first step would be, we receive the HCA. We then will, once that happens, we will submit that to the state. We will receive some preferential treatment because of the fact that we are operational and we are in their system. So, we would expect, that would move pretty quickly, about three months. Once we have a building permit, however, we would expect about six months to turn that around. We're expecting about three to four months for construction, leaving another three to, two to three months, I should say, for inspections. And by inspections, I mean, there's two separate inspections that need to occur. There's the post-provisional license inspection by the state, and then there's going to be a post-final license. So, we would expect that to be in the six-month range from the time we receive a building permit.
Okay.
We did that same, as I mentioned before, in Littleton. We received the building permit in July of twenty-one, and we actually opened in March of twenty-two. So, but they canceled December on us.
How dare they?
I know.
When you're doing deliveries to your facility, will they be screened deliveries?
So, if you look, I'm just going to, I'm going to reference the building as we're looking at it. Bottom left-hand corner, there's that pocket, that little interior corner.
Yep.
We're going to receive deliveries in that location. So, we intend on having a screen that runs parallel to the building this way here.
Okay.
And it allows a van to back into that space. So, they'll be screened to the customers. We have a similar setup as this at our Bill Ricka location. Littleton, we don't have any screen whatsoever. We've never really had an issue at all. All of our deliveries are accompanied by staff, typically from our inventory staff. So, they'll check the, typically, it's a driver with somebody who actually facilitates the actual delivery. So, usually, only one person comes inside our building while the other, from the delivery company, is in the driver's seat or passenger seat. We sign them in, we check them in, we bring their products down into our receiving room, we weigh it, and then, once that process is completed, we check them out. So, it's a pretty secure process that we're familiar with.
Okay. Thank, I appreciate that. We had talked about that. Why, so you're the first one that we've talked to that's located near ninety-three. And so, can you tell us a little bit about why you feel this location is the best location for Tewksbury?
Sure. That's the number one, I'd say. Proximity to ninety-three. So, you're, you're going to get folks that are going to come off ninety-three, visit us. I've heard other applicants use four minutes. That's accurate. Four minutes is pretty common. A lot of people preorder. They'll come in, they'll pick up, they're out. It's a quick, quick process. So, you know, I'd say, location proximity to ninety-three. There's only one other dispensary en masse along ninety-three. That's Sanctuary Medicinals, south of us in Woburn. They recently, they're medical, but they recently were licensed for adult use. So, other than them, we're going to be the only show in town off ninety-three. So, proximity to ninety-three is number one. It's a standalone building. It's not a plaza. You don't have multiple tenants, you know, with so much activity happening. Both of our current locations are very similar to this. Republic Road in Bill Ricka is right off Route Three. Our Great Road location in Littleton, right off 495. So, people like easy access. I'd like to pat ourselves on the back, too, for a moment, and say, we have built a very good reputation to the consumer, and Collective is pretty well-known. We have people traveling, say, from Marlborough to go to our Littleton location. Respectively, we have people up in North Nashua who'll travel south to our Bill Ricka location. So, we would expect the same. People will travel to come visit us. We have great variety in our menu. As I mentioned, we have a lot of different vendors we work with. We are not vertical, and that's okay, because we create more variety, more excitement. We have great relationships with our vendors, to the point that they will discount, in a sense, their pricing with us, because we buy such high volume. And what we do, in turn, is we don't look to make the triple-profit margin, because they gave us, the vendors gave us, such a good price. We pass that off to the consumer. So, you may compare our menu and say, geez, you know, you have a thirty-dollar eighth, and you have like five or six different strains of that. What's that model? Why? Because volume. We make up for, you know, that higher price point by having more customers come to us over, you know, the other competitors that they could go to. So, you know, yes, it's location. That's a huge factor, but I would like to believe that it is us as well, and we have really built a very good reputation for ourselves.
And finally, can you tell me about how many traffic trips you expect in and out? How many?
Sure. So, you know, I've heard, yes, I've heard this answer, this question answered a couple of different ways. I'd like to answer it what we believe is real. What we believe is real, because what we have recently experienced is, there is a ramp-up in sales. You're, you're not going to open doors and have, you know, five hundred customers at your door. We'd love to see that, but that's not reality. So, we would see a slower ramp-up. Our expectation is in like the first few months, one to two months, we would see somewhere in the area of maybe about a hundred twenty-five to a hundred fifty customers. Then, more and more customers are starting to realize that you're even there. Then, from there, the next, say, three to six months, you'll see that ramp even higher. I would say we could get up to around three hundred to maybe three hundred fifty customers. And then thereafter, you know, into, say, you know, end of Q three into Q four of that first operating year, you'll likely see, at this location, closer to that, maybe five hundred, five hundred fifty customers a day. Just to share a little real data with you, Littleton, and I actually explained this to Planning Board prior to us even having a traffic report done, because I wanted to, again, share, share real data, not, you know, cable strips across the road and, you know, seeing how many cars actually drive there, because they're not all coming to you in reality. They may drive by, but they may not come to you. But, you know, the point I'm trying to make is, we base our projections on population. So, population within the town, and then also your surrounding towns, how many dispensaries are in those towns? Littleton, we have one next door in Eyre, and in Bill Ricka, we have Lowell, and then you have to really go further north up to Tingsborough. We see an average of two hundred seventy-five customers a day in Littleton, and an average of seven hundred two customers a day in Bill Ricka. Okay? We have had zero issues as far as traffic is concerned. If you've ever been to Treble Cove in Bill Ricka, it's busy down there. We're across from, I think it's a twelve-pump gas station. You know, it's a heavily-used industrial zone, but we have yet to have a police detail because it's But we have yet to have a police detail, because it's never been asked of us, and it's really not needed. And the, that turnover rate of literally four minutes per transaction is real, and that keeps that, that flow moving along. So I hope that answered the question.
I appreciate that, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your application.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I am, I've whittled my questions way down, because my colleagues covered a lot. So hours of operation, can you remind me? What would you?
10 a.m. to 8 p.m.
10 a.m., okay, to 8. All right, and can you tell me what percentage of your traffic is related to the pre-ordering that you mentioned?
We're looking at about 60%.
60% at this point of pre-ordering. So the, the time of transaction, I assume, is a lot shorter, right? When someone pre-orders?
Yeah, four minutes is the average. A pre-order, you could see them in and out in about two, two minutes.
Okay, and, and a person who comes in and actually shops and buys, what would be? Do you have an estimate on that?
I'd say on the other side, roughly six to eight minutes.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, you mentioned earlier in your comments about it's a very competitive environment, which, you know, we've done some research too, and I don't disagree with that. So I'm interested in your perspective on, we have the potential to do three licenses here. So as a prospective business that would have to compete in an environment where there's no competition yet, but there might be a fair amount, just talk to me about your perception of that.
Sure.
Your thoughts about that.
So we, we feel very positive, very confident about our location, because it's proximity to 93.
Yeah.
So, you know, if, as long as there's one up in our zone, one dispensary in our zone, we feel pretty strong that we're gonna, we're gonna likely pull a pretty high volume over there as a result. Andover being right next door, I mean, we're almost on the Andover line. We're gonna see a lot of Andover customers, most likely. So that will help us with a lack of competition, actually, because Andover, as we know, does not have any licensed locations. So we're, we're gonna see ourselves as a destination there, coming off of Route 93. So, you know, we're, we're gonna market that quite a bit, actually. We currently have three billboard sides, electronic billboard sides along Route 93, I'm sorry, along Route 3. We would, we have a, a game plan in place to be along 93 as well, as 495, a little further north on the Bill Rica-Tewksbury end. So, you know, competition, yes, it's there, but we do feel like we're gonna be in our own little pocket there, where we can get the local traffic from the center up, and then also off of 93. So, and again, we've made a good name for ourselves, so we feel like we can push some of the competition out, because we are very competitive with our prices.
All right, just a couple of other last questions. First of all, I commend you and your colleague for presenting your materials yourselves.
Thank you.
That's refreshing. I'm a lawyer, by the way, so, you know, listening to lawyers is getting old. But I appreciate your candor and the approach that you brought to it. It's not gonna decide the outcome of how I vote, of course, but, but it is refreshing, so I want to commend you for that.
Thank you.
You, you mentioned you've got two other locations. Where, where's your corporate headquarters? Where do you work?
Littleton.
And if you have a facility here, are you gonna be in Littleton?
I start my morning every day in Littleton.
Okay.
It's three minutes from my house. It's a good starting point.
I don't blame you.
Yeah, it's a good starting point. You know, I will frequent Bill Rica five, six times a month. It doesn't mean I'm not, I don't know everything that is going on. I don't feel as though I personally have to physically be on-site
Understood.
to operate and manage effectively.
You will have one manager here?
We will have a, an assistant store manager. We have a director of operations who is just under Joe. So that director of operations, he will actually visit all the stores within a week's time. Below him will be an assistant manager for that location. Working with the assistant manager will be shift supervisors, so every single shift will have a supervisor on-site. Sometimes the assistant manager is with that supervisor during that shift. The assistant manager will work a 40-hour week on-site. We will have a, an assistant director of security. We will have an assistant director of inventory, who is for that location, for that Tewksbury location. So we have managers in each of the necessary departments. And then we have Joe, of course, too, as our COO, so he also knows everything that's going on.
So who ultimately, if, if we had a concern, the town manager gets a call from one of us? Who are we going to?
That would be me, number one. That would be Joe, number two, and that would be Dan, our director of operations, number three. I still handle all municipal interactions. I communicate directly with, at the moment, it's assistant town manager in Bill Rica. However, I have spoken with, with John and met with John Curran multiple times. I'm very open to speaking directly with chiefs of police. And, you know, if I may, real, real quick, just to kind of piggyback on what you said, you know, Joe and I went back and forth today, not even today, but prior to this. Should we have the attorney there? And we didn't do it with Planning Board, and I, and I hope that they recognize that, too, that this isn't by any means old hat, it's just we want you to hear from who you're going to speak to if there's a problem, right? Or if there's a success. It's going to be us. And I take this very seriously, you know, and, and, you know, real estate and construction is, is in the rear-view mirror now. This is, this is the career. This is like my back nine. So this is what I'm doing. And, and, you know, yes, I have an attorney, a cannabis attorney. We will use them, but we feel like we can actually answer the questions better than they can, because they're not physically inside our facilities, right? They represent us, they, they represent the business, but they don't represent the daily activities, you know? So, so thank you for recognizing that.
No worries. All right, anyone, you're the sole owner here, so you have no interest in any other applications No, you do not. coming before us, right?
Correct.
And if we don't approve yours, you have no business interest with any of the other?
We'll, we'll keep operating Bill Rica and Littleton.
All right.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay, those are my questions for tonight. Let me ask you, is there anyone in the room that has questions about this particular application? All right. You're getting off scot-free. Okay, so you heard, I think you heard us talk about this, but we've now done, I think, five of these. We are continuing them all to July 18, in an effort to allow for further information exchange. Without a doubt, I want to echo Mr. Krappman's request
Yes.
to get some clarity on that from MDR.
We will.
That's an important piece, in my opinion, as well. So that's a good example of why we want to continue this, to allow you for that opportunity. And I want to, again, reiterate for the benefit of the public, because we do know that people are watching this, or they'll watch the tape, that if they have comments or concerns about this particular application or any other, they should write to us through email or letter, and get it to the Town Hall Officers Board, Select Board, so that we can take their opinions and, and issues into mind. So with that having been said, I will ask for a motion to continue this hearing to July 18.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, motions offered by Mr. Krappman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Recession for a second. Yep. So if you want, you want to come up, we're just taking a two-minute recess for a second, and we'll let you guys get set up. In the interest of all of us getting home in a reasonable hour tonight, let's, let's get started. This is our third hearing this evening, and I will read the hearing notice, and then I'll offer just a couple of comments to the applicants and those who are present in the room. But notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Select Board Regulation Article 37 Marijuana Retail Sales License Policies and Regulations on June 13, 2023, at 8 p.m. at Town Hall 1009 Main Street, Tewksbury, Mass. 01876, on the application for pure Tewksbury, doing business as Smith Cannabis, for a license to operate as a marijuana retailer on premises located at 1699 Shaw Sheen Street, consisting, excuse me, consisting of an area of approximately 3,600-square-foot building, oops, Andover, 1695 Shaw Sheen Street, I'll ask you to clarify that, consisting of an area of 6,000-square-foot building in Tewksbury, Mass. We always ask for input from the public. I want to know for the record that we have an abudders list with six abudders notified, and we have the legal notification that was in our newspaper, posted on May 24, 2023. And this particular hearing actually pertains, just for clarity's sake, 1695, right?
Correct.
Right? And you've withdrawn 1699, is that fair?
Correct.
So that's my error, I apologize. All right, so I want to welcome you, I'll ask you to introduce yourselves in a second. And just for the benefit, I don't know if you were in the room at the outset, maybe you were, but there's other people who have since come in. So I want to try to keep this to an hour. You, you probably just heard, we're not gonna make any decisions tonight, so you can understand that. We're gonna probably ask for some more info, information from you as we go. And our goal is hopefully to get closer to a decision at our July meeting. So I'd like you to try to keep this maybe 15 minutes, high level, right? We have your materials. I know you supplied a revised app, we've all received that, we've looked it over. So, you know, the real question or benefit tonight is really tell us what you think we really need to know, right? To get to a good decision here. And then, as you know, my colleagues will certainly have some questions. And then, if there's anyone in the room who has questions, we'll give them an opportunity. And then we'll let you go home.
Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to you, and thank you for your interest in Tewksbury, and for being here with us tonight.
Great, and, and thank you for having us tonight, we appreciate it. Jim Sotiris and Todd Brady here, we're the owners of Smith Cannabis. They stole our thunder a little bit. We didn't bring our corporate counsel, our cannabis counsel. We believe this is a business discussion. So as the owners and operators of the business, we wanted to show up and, you know, be able to have that business discussion. So thanks for having us, and we'll try to make it short and sweet.
Thank you.
So the address we're going for, for an application is 1695 Shaw Sheen Street. The location meets all the local and state zoning requirements. We've spent the last 12 months evaluating sites in Tewksbury. We met with Steve maybe a year ago, and actually suggested this kind of 93 corridor and the Interstate Overlay District as a great location for a potential dispensary. We originally were looking at 1699 Shaw Sheen Street. After working with, kind of internally, with some of the neighbors, as well as some of the, kind of the, the people within the community, as well as the town, we felt that 1699 might not be the best location. Fortunately, our real estate partner, who is here today as well, we had an opportunity to go next door to 1695, and we actually are very happy with where we ended up with this, and we think long-term, this is, we think is the best location for a retail dispensary in the entire town. So a little bit about Smith Cannabis. We currently operate several licenses in Massachusetts. We have a retail store in Lowell. We also have a retail cultivation and manufacturing facility in Lowell as well. We have 80 employees. Our store over on Ryder Street is probably the top third, top-three store in the state when it comes to kind of volume and traffic. We're seeing an average of 1,500 daily customers. Out of the cultivation facility, our cultivation product is highly regarded throughout the state, and we're representing in over 120 dispensaries throughout the state. So from a, we didn't do bios, but from an owner, owner and a management kind of perspective, I have background in finance and cannabis, I've been doing this for a little while. Jim's been in retail, real estate, also operates a regulated market in a bar restaurant in Boston. So we're very familiar with operating regulated markets. We live locally, we're on-site daily, we're hands-on managers. We, at the other day, run the business from a day-to-day perspective, and in Tewksbury, this would be no different. Something that's also very important for us is we have a dedicated compliance team. We have a great track record with the, with the Cannabis Control Commission. We have cannabis attorneys and a, and a full team that deals with the compliance and regulatory framework in the state of Massachusetts when it comes to these stores. So why Tewksbury? When we look at Tewksbury, especially the 93 corridor, most of the towns from Havrell to Woburn and even further are, have recreational bans for retail. That represents a population of 250,000 people. And with potentially three licensed, dispensary licenses in Tewksbury, we believe that all of these have the opportunity of being incredibly high-volume locations. We operate a high-volume store, so we understand how that works, what the details are, and, and how to make it work. A couple of key components that we think make a difference is you gotta have a sizable building, you have to have parking capacity to be able to handle your customers as well as your employees. Having a standalone location without additional tenants, you remove the tenant complications when it comes to traffic in and out, and we think it's very important to be close to the interstate. Limiting traffic from those coming outside of Tewksbury will be beneficial. You don't want them driving downtown Tewksbury in residential areas, coming to the stores, and then turning around and leaving the town. So when it comes to our location, we feel that we check all the boxes for this. So 1695 Shaw Sheen Street, we're actually, you know, we're finishing up planning right now, but the, the final project, as it's spec today, is a 6,600-square-foot standalone building. Smith would be the only tenant. We have 72 dedicated parking spaces, so 72 seems like a lot. Our store in Lowell, we have 42 parking spaces. We're very busy, we, we operate a high-volume store. We've recently have relocated 10 to 15 of our employees to a rental lot next door to open up additional parking spots for customers. So the 72 seems like a lot, but it's, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna need it, or you're gonna want it just in case you have the business. In addition, it's located a half a mile from Interstate 93, and a tenth of the mile to, you know, into Tewksbury. So it's gonna be a brand-new, state-of-the-art building. 4,500 square feet of the building will be the dispensary, and roughly 2,100 square feet will be dedicated to Smith's corporate office. We plan on relocating our corporate office over into Tewksbury here, to take up the, the other third of this building. That would be Jim, myself, and a couple other key management. third of this building, that would be Jim, myself, and a couple other key management folks that work in the corporate office. We would take up less than 10 parking spaces, so we'd still have 60 to 65 parking spots dedicated for customers. We are in the process of planning right now, we've had two meetings with the planning board, we anticipate being approved on June 26. We have a couple, Jeff here is our engineer, we have a couple utility comments that we had to, that we got late and we need to respond to, but we're back on the agenda on the 26th, and I think it's just taken a couple extra meetings because it's a brand-new build with a vacant lot that's got a lot of work that goes into it. So here's our floor plan, so you see on the left side, we have the office, and on the right side, we have the dispensary. What's key here is we have a large dispensary floor, we have seven POS stations, we believe we can handle upwards of 100-plus transactions every hour. The building will be outfitted with all the, you know, required Cannabis Control Commission compliance and regulatory requirements, panic buttons at every POS, at the ID check, in the vault, in the office, at the exits, ID checks, 24-hour cameras, security monitoring, you know, all of the secure product in and out of the building, all the things that everybody else has to do from a dispensary perspective, this dispensary will obviously have it built. So, we pride ourselves on being a customer service business, so today, I took the 1263, I think that was as of yesterday, but we have over 1,250 Google Business Reviews. This is probably the biggest tracker of customer feedback when it comes to, you know, in 2023, we have an average rating of 4.9 stars. Just want to say, we have the most reviews and the highest review of any existing cannabis business that has presented, that has submitted an application into Tewksbury.
It's pretty good, it's better than all of us at this table.
So, we have a, we think we have a very efficient ordering system, we have three ways to order, you can do a preorder online, you can walk into the store and order in a kiosk, or you can go to register. Typical times of a preorder is probably about two minutes in and out the door, kiosk is a little bit more, and then at the register, it's however long you want to take. You want to spend 15 minutes and talk about what the recommendations you're looking for, we can do that, if you know exactly what you want, you could order it right there and be out the door a few minutes later. Something that we also think differentiates ourselves is, we have a very broad product offering, we have a large customer base that wants a lot of different things, and it's our job to make sure that we have something for everybody. So our products are broad, we offer a lot of Smith Cannabis branded products, but we also buy a lot of products in the wholesale market, and we bring those in to offer tinctures, topicals, edibles, you know, flower, pre-rolls, and by no means do we own any one category. So, we represent a small fraction of Smith branded products actually in our store. One of the other things we do is, which is why I think we have been able to have as much traffic as we are, is we offer the most competitive pricing around. So, we are, we are, and we don't try to take the margin, we give the margin back to the customer, we are, we buy a lot of market, we buy a lot of volume in the wholesale market, we're a cultivator, so we pass that savings back on to the consumer, and I think based on the 1,250 reviews and the 4.9 stars, the customers appreciate that. Something that is with cannabis, and we see it at the store, is there is no typical cannabis consumer, right? You know, it's of age, everybody's 21 or older, but you get people that are 21, you get people that are 80, you get people that are older, and everywhere in between, all genders, all demographics. We pride ourselves on inclusiveness, we have a very diverse customer base, but we also have a very diverse staff, because we think that's important to be able to, you know, have a relationship with the customer and be a place of business where customers want to come back. So, speed to market, we, this is our number one priority right now from a business perspective. We have the existing operations, they've been open for two years, they're running pretty smooth, we have very strong management in place. Jim has had extensive experience on the construction pass, I think over the past 10 years, they've had multiple projects from downtown Boston to up in Maine in residential areas, so we've had a lot of, Jim brings an extensive construction experience. In Lowell, it took us 11 months from the day we signed the host community agreement until the day we opened. To put that in perspective, we purchased two adjoining lots, we knocked down two buildings, we combined lots, we built a standalone store in seven months. The CCC process takes a little bit of extra time because you need to file the paperwork, and they need to show up, and then you need to go on the agenda, and all the things that go with it. To put that in perspective, the other HEAs, so Lowell issued five HEAs on the same day. We were the first location open from all of the other ones, and we were the only location that had to build a new building. Everybody else had to just fix up an existing building and a floor plan, and we were open several months, if not six months to a year before other people. We also have significant financial resources to execute the project. Jane, I've heard you've asked how much it's going to cost, you know, we have our real estate partner who's going to build the building, and then, you know, we're thinking it's probably going to cost a million bucks to outfit the thing and get it operational. Excuse me. Follow the rules, so Cannabis Control Commission, they have hundreds of pages of regulations and rules and compliance, they've got dozens of investigators, we do this every day, we have a dedicated compliance team, we have a dedicated cannabis legal team that comes in every quarter and makes sure that we're doing internal audits to make sure that we're following the rules, this, you know, seat-of-sale tracking system, our security system, our inventory procedures, you know, are you over 21, how are we checking IDs, anti-diversion, cash handling, so we do this every day, we follow the regulations to a T, we plan on continuing to do that in Tewksbury. If there is additional regulatory requirements that Tewksbury puts, you know, is looking for above what the CCC is looking for, we're open to having that conversation and complying and making sure that you're comfortable with our business, and, you know, everybody's happy with where we're at. So, local input, we expect to have 40 full-time employees at this location, we'll give priority to Tewksbury residents and those who have been disappointingly impacted. We will agree to pay an impact fee from a host community agreement. We're also, we're not a billboard company, you can't find a billboard of Smith Cannabis around, we are focused on our brand awareness, we have a strong digital presence given our Google reviews and how we've built the channel, and people find our products is typically online, so we're not a flashy company with weed leaves and giant billboards all over the place in town, that's just not who we are. I think something that's really important here is, so our real estate partner, Dave and his family, they've had a local business in Tewksbury for the last 25 years, they've been an upstanding member of the community, they're making a bet on us, right? So, they bought a piece of land, we signed the lease, we're in this together, if we're not successful, they're not successful, and I think that shows a lot of trust and support for what we're trying to do, and obviously, we plan to replicate that, and we want to be here for a really long time. So, in closing, you know, I believe we have, we have a very strong management team, we've got a deep team, financial resources, compliance resources, we believe our location is superior, standalone building, ample parking, easy access to the highway, we're going to create jobs for Tewksbury residents, we're going to generate impact fees for the town of Tewksbury. But, when we submitted our license or our application, you know, we had kind of a generic host community agreement, and I think what's important is, we want to be, have that structured the way the town would like it structured, because each, we know each municipality has different ways they want to run these cannabis businesses. We can say we'll have weekly meetings, we could say we'll have monthly meetings, quarterly meetings, you might say, we don't even want to talk to you, send us the check at the end of the year, right? We're open to however you want to structure this, to where you're comfortable with us, and we will make accommodations to make that work, because we're committed here.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I didn't ask this question this evening, but I did last evening, and you're kind of answering it, and I think your predecessor companies that presented tonight, I'm taking it for granted that if we get further in the process, there will be some open-mindedness about modifying the agreements and talking about those, because you're giving us a straw.
Yep.
For all intents and purposes.
Exactly, and that's why we, we don't want to be a burden.
Yeah.
But we want to have a good relationship that makes it work on your side, and we'll make it work however that way.
Yeah, we're not, we're not in a position to negotiate with eight possibles, we'll get it down to who's the serious, you know, end game here, and then we'll, we'll have those discussions, so, that's good.
That's it.
Good for you, thank you. All right, let me see what my colleagues have to ask.
I'll jump in.
Go ahead.
So I have visited your location in Lowell, I see that you've moved your employee parking, place is very busy, I see cars get into the roadway on 38 and Rogers Street. I know you have parking spots there, what, you have 45 parking spots?
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
I was giving you three.
Yeah.
Well, I have gone by there and see cars.
Yeah.
In the roadway, trying to get into the location where it's busy going in there. I do have a little bit of concern that this is one of the only locations off of 93, so we're going to have, you know, one of the things that you didn't project, that we've seen from a lot of other people, is the revenue that you're projecting for this, do you have any ideas what the revenue you're going to be projecting for the first couple of years of this location?
So, it'll be a natural build, right? The location, it'll start slow and it'll go from there. You know, revenue in some ways is hard to predict, as the market gets more competitive, prices are going one way, right? So prices are coming down from the stores. When we opened, I think our average, you know, ticket or cart was, you know, 30% higher than it is today, but we think generally it's a thousand customer a day location, you know, once the business gets off the door.
And from a revenue point, maybe 15 to 20, hopefully, annually, you know, when we opened at Lowell, we started at about 200 to 300 customers a day, and like Todd said, we're now up to 1,500 customers a day on average, so it's gotten significantly busier and it's just continued to build for the last year and a half. We don't think we're going to get to that number, just because other places are opening. Hopefully, this one, close to that location, there's going to be maybe three in Tewksbury, so I think inevitably, we're going to be taking some of our own business, as well stores closer to our Lowell store potentially. So, we don't anticipate it being as busy as Lowell is now, but we would hope we're going to see 1,000 customers a day that, you know, may speak to 15 to 20 million, hopefully.
Yep. And I think with the parking we have set up here is, you know, is ample to be able to cover that.
Honestly, if you're talking about four minutes, parking really isn't an issue, it's people getting, be able to get in, get into that spot, get out, and having that many spots is great, but it's just a matter of moving traffic in and out. If you're doing four minutes, nobody's going to, those parking spots are going to be available very quickly.
So, it is, but today, everybody's got a cell phone, right? So they drive in, they park, they sit in the car, they text, they email, they call, they hang out, they go into the store, they come back, they hang out in their car, so like, the transaction times are definitely fast, but getting them in and out of the parking lot is a different story sometimes, and so people just, sometimes they just hang out there, right? And so, having, having more parking is a good thing.
And we did speak quickly to the fact that we, we started this process a year ago, looking at 1699 Shaw Sheen and being in the Plaza next to Luna Rosa, and like Todd said, we had discussions with the community, we went in front of planning, we heard the neighborhood's comments, and we pivoted completely to this, we just didn't feel like pushing that application forward with that parking lot, which we've now heard is already an issue without a dispensary in there. So we pushed that aside and we concentrated on this, and Dave and his family made the capital investment to put this land in play, and we feel like we have created plenty of space in this parking lot for the flow of traffic, as well as all of our staff to be parking there and our customers.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, that's really what I had, I think I'll just pass it on to the board, they'll ask the same questions.
Thank you.
Yep.
Let me turn to my right, Ms. Wallman, you have questions?
I do, I have a couple. Thank you very much, I appreciated the revised application, the other two were also pretty hefty, so thank you for that, and I noted some of the differences, so that's, that's good. I appreciate some of your answers, you've answered a lot of my questions already. Can you tell me if you've had any violations of the CCC?
So, we, we've had several inspections, we've had some minor, I wouldn't call them violations, but, you know, they wanted us to have two bins to hold waste product, not one bin, right? We've had some where they've said, oh, you need to plan a correction to make some adjustments, not from a, we've had theft or, you know, things like that, but yes, when they've come in, we've had some additional operational things that we've had to approve upon, we write a plan of correction, the CCC says, they approve our plan of correction, we implement it, and then off we go. And that's standard practice when it comes to.
Cultivation facility.
Yeah, cultivation facility and at the dispensary.
Okay, thank you. You told me you think it was, I know you're leasing the land from the owners, and you said it was about a million dollars was your budget to finish it, or to construct and fit it?
So we think it's going to be about a million dollars to build it, and then another million dollars to finish the inside of it.
Okay, all right, so two million dollars.
And ideally, that's split 50/50 here.
I see. Which part's split 50/50?
The build, so Dave, Dave and his family would be building the building, and then we would be outfitting the inside of the building.
So we would be tenants?
For house.
Okay, so it's not just the land, it's also the structure of the building, which belongs to?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. What about site work, how long do you think that'll take?
I think, what, what did he say to knock down the trees? Couple days to knock down the trees, the grading's going to take, I don't know, let's call it a couple weeks.
About 30 days of work?
Yeah, 30 days for the, for the site work, and then, from there, we'll build the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
Estimated time to completion, to be open, if you were to receive our license?
An HCA tomorrow?
Yeah.
Eight to 10?
Not tomorrow, but.
Yeah, 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 eight to 10 months.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think what we would do is that the minute we had an HCA signed, we would, the construction would start immediately to knock the trees down, build the building, right? We would file our application with the CCC, the minute we had a professional license, then we would finish the inside of the building, so we don't think we're really going to lose much time because of a new build.
Okay, and that's a question I think we've been asking pretty much everybody. Your financing is through your operations, is that right, or you have any outside investors?
Nope, it would, all internal.
Okay. I've asked this for the other two candidates tonight, so I'll ask you as well, but you kind of already touched on it, so if you can keep it real brief, why do you think this is the best location for Tewksbury? If we were to do one, for instance?
Yeah, I mean, when I went to visit Steve, this was, this was the location, I think, that is going to do the most business in town, it's right at 93, there's 250,000 people that are not being serviced locally off of 93 because of the bans, and this is the closest location from the highway.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Hallen?
I'll be real quick, honest, you say you're still before the planning board, correct?
Yeah, we've been in front of them twice for this application.
Did you go before the Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Did they approve?
So they were just waiting on, Jeff can speak to that.
Yes, sir.
You're going to have to grab a mic, okay? And tell us your name for the record, so.
Jeff Ketter, it's a civil engineer working with these guys. We're still open with planning, still open with conservation as well, the open item is a resolution of some comments from DPW and engineering, we've addressed all of our comments from conservation at this point, so we've just continued until we can close out with, with DPW in order to close out with CONCOM.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. All right, everyone's being efficient now, this is good. All right, so I'm going to close with just the questions that you've probably heard me ask already, but you have no interest in any other operator or any other application, right? You're on your own? And assuming if, for example, we did not approve your license, you have no arrangements to partner with anybody? Okay. Okay, that's all I have for now, I think we'll probably have some follow-ups as we get deeper into our analysis and kind of digest all we've heard this evening, so, you know, if in fact we do, we'd appreciate any cooperation with that, but let me ask if there's anyone in the room who has comments they want to offer on this particular application? Okay, sir, you go first, and again, if you don't mind, I know you introduced yourself before, but.
John Murphy, Shandell Drive, Tewksbury, is the owner of Luna Rosa, is David, is he an investor? Is he, or is he just, they said they have no outside investors?
Right.
So is he part of their cannabis business in Tewksbury now, or is he just fronting them the money for the land or buying the land for them and building for them?
Yep, all right, so we'll ask you to clarify.
He's just our landlord, he's purchased the land and he's going to build the building whether we get a license or not, we're just. We're just gonna be his tenant in that building. So he has no stake in Smith Cannabis.
All right, so whether, whether or not you are there, there is gonna be a building built there, period. All right.
Okay? All right, I saw some other hands go up. Where, where are you? You moved around, okay.
I went to the microphone just in case. Al Mancini, 15 Kenneth Lane. My concern, because you guys seem like great guys, honestly, and I almost hate saying this, is, is another wooded lot getting cut down for more building when there's plenty of vacant buildings in town that aren't being used? And my concern is, once those trees go, there'll never be trees on it again. And as I said, nothing personal, because you guys seem like you're great guys. I really mean that. But in all honesty, do we have to do another clear-cut job to add another, like a parking lot? I mean, the thing is, as I said, it's just, there's plenty of open space already that can be utilized for buildings and, and generate the same income without.
Fair point to make. That's why my colleagues and I get to stay awake at night.
No, I appreciate it because I can, I, I've just listened to two of these and I can imagine what it's like to listen to eight, you know?
Should try it sometime.
Hi, Susan Young, 1408 Whipple Road. I just want to add my voice to what Al just said. There are many other places in town that are open lots, that are vacant buildings, that are places that could support cannabis dispensary. And I think that it's far more important to look at a solution that is ecologically sound for the town of Tewksbury rather than going ahead and knocking down a bunch of trees, if I can use your terminology, which really are an important part of the, the town and the structure of Tewksbury. So I'd like that to be taken into consideration, please.
We certainly will.